Motion by Evans.
Second.
Second by Grattan. Any further discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been amended. Amanda, Baker Tilly, you're up.
All right, do you want me to... In a specific place over here?
Camera can catch you that way.
Right here?
For sure. For sure.
All right. Well, thanks for having me. I haven't been in the new facility yet here, so it's great to see it. Um, I'm going to talk... My name's Amanda Blomberg. I'm with Baker Tilly, the city's auditors. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about the financial results for the 2021 audit. Um, I gave you just some financial highlights, and that's what I'm going to focus on. Um, the financial statement document that you have in front of you is pretty long and complex. It has a lot of information in it. Uh, but this little handout I have kind of boils down some of the key, um, I guess, uh, benchmarks that I think is important for you to focus on. So, we'll just read off of that, and if there's any questions, um, let me know. I'm happy to field whatever you have. Um, so the first page here talks about the general fund and fund balance. So, um, just a little bit of background. Uh, the city's general fund is the main operating fund. It's where the bulk of the tax dollars go, uh, to support administration, public safety, public order, recreation, and parks and those kinds of costs. Um, given that, we take a look at the equity in that fund, um, or the fund balance, as it's called, uh, to see, you know, how much is on reserve there? Is that a good amount or not? And so, uh, this chart that you see at the top, uh, shows fund balance by certain categories. The top two lines, so you'll see the black line is a 2020 amount compared to the green line is 21 of each category. The top one is your total. So, you'll see that the total fund balance actually increased by about $226,000 in '21. Um, we'll get into the details of that in a little bit here. Um, there are different categories of fund balance or the equity based on the liquidity, essentially, or how soon you can access those funds. Uh, if we start at the bottom and jump down there, you'll see the non-spendable category. Um, and that is really un... It is like it says, you can't spend it on current bills. It's wrapped up in either long-term type assets, or, uh, we may have already spent it on a prepaid item or something like that. So, um, what you'll see here is you'll notice that this amount went up quite a bit in '21 compared to '20. Um, and the majority of this balance is related to, um, uh, an advance, uh, that the general fund is making to TIF four, uh, which is really typical for newer TIFs, where the general fund might be the finance, um, might be providing the financing for some of those startup costs with the TIFs. The other, uh, piece of this, which really accounts for the increase in that, um, non-spendable category, uh, is owed by the CDBG-CL, or the Close Fund, I believe is what you're calling it, and that is funding the Highland and Oak project. Um, so, that, uh, project got off... It got started with some engineering costs in '21, um, with anticipation of continuing into '22. So, some of those costs were just funded upfront, um, by the general fund. And so, the expectation is that those will... Should get repaid by some other source, whether it's a grant or, um, assessments or whatever. So, um, you'll see the other two categories, um, assigned and unassigned were really similar to what they were last year. Um, those are more liquid in nature, um, basically available to use on your current budgeted costs and, um, um, able to essentially pay your bills. So, um, those amounts really remain relatively stable. Any questions so far? Um, in the middle of the page, you'll see a very summarized income statement, essentially summarizing the revenues and expenditures, um, actual compared to your budget. Um, you had a balanced budget anticipating expenditures would equal revenues, which is great. Um, actual, um, increase, uh, you know, we had an increase in revenues, so an increase overall in fund balance of about $226,000. If you go to the next page, um, this continues an analysis of the general fund balance, um, and compares the... That those assigned and unassigned categories to the annual operating expenditures. So, we make a ratio here, we compare the two, um, and come up with a percentage. And what this really means is that how... How much of our annual budget can we fund with our reserves that are on hand, that... With our spendable reserves? And so, this chart actually trends this percentage or this ratio out over the last five years. And you'll see that, um, back in 2017 and '18, we're up in the 40 percent, um, um, ratio, and then that's dropped in the last couple of years to around 27 percent. The city's goal is to have this percentage in between 15 and 20 percent, which is, you know, on the lower side for a smaller community. So, I don't... I mean, you can still try to, you know, kind of, um, lower it down into that range if you desire, but, um, you know, where it's sitting now is not unreasonable, um, at around that 27 percent. So, essentially, what this is saying is you have enough reserves to get through about a quarter of your year without any other revenue sources. Any questions on that? All right. The next, uh, topic is, uh, general obligation debt. And so, this is an area of focus for, you know, people that... Outsiders that look at your financial statements as well. Um, also a measure of, of, you know, liquidity and financial health as well. So, um, general obligation debt is secured by the tax levy. Uh, the utilities may have some revenue debt outstanding, um, but that is secured by user fees in general. Uh, so, general obligation debt is... Is, uh, limited by statute. Um, it can only... You can only have as much outstanding that equals 5 percent of the city's equalized value. So, um, if we look at this chart here, you'll see the black line represents the debt capacity. So, that is 5 percent of equalized value, which does change over time as the value of the city, um, increases. Then, the green line here is actual ge... General obligation debt outstanding in those same years. And so, you'll see, you know, space between there, which is good, which means that you're not at your maximum. Um, the actual percentage, uh, outstanding in compared to your, um, maximum amount is 55 percent at the end of '21. Um, that... That, uh, percentage is kind of, you know, hovered around there. It's probably... It's been down, and it's up a little bit higher this year, uh, because there was a $2 million debt issuance in '21, uh, for some street projects and other, um, capital items. So, um, it's... And it's expected that that will fluctuate over time as debt is issued and then, uh, later on paid, uh, down over the course of time. So, 55 percent is not a bad place to be. Right around 50 percent is perfectly, you know, acceptable. I see some municipalities are... Are higher than that, some are lower. Um, once you get into like the 70 to 80 range, that's getting a little on the high side. So, uh, right where you're at is... Is perfectly fine. You know, wouldn't raise any eyebrows, uh, by a, you know, a bond helps or anything like that. Uh, the last page here, um, also, uh, takes your debt service, your annual principal and interest payments, and compares it to, um, your non-capital cost in your governmental funds. And so, um, you'll see this green line here, um, took a big, uh, decrease in the 2019 timeframe. I believe that is about the time when a couple of the TIFs closed, and those debts, uh, were then, uh, paid off at that time. Um, so, right now, debt service is about 10 percent of the... The city's, uh, operating costs, which, um, is pretty low. Um, 20 percent, or being under 20 percent is about the, uh, the... Kind of the benchmark that I've seen used quite often. And so, this just says that, you know, you have a pretty low percent of your costs are actually going to pay your debt down. So, some data down here below, um, in '21 and '20, just comparing principal and interest, uh, over those years with the non-capital, um, costs as well. So, that's what feeds into, uh, that ratio.
What about the skyrocketing value of property? How's that going to affect our... Our debt calculation there?
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, the... I'm... I'm not quite sure. I know governments tend to be a little bit more reactive, and it takes a little bit of time before those equalized values, you know, that are determined by the state really catch up, um, with those... With inflationary, um, number, uh, increases and stuff. But, um, it... It probably will, um... You'll probably see an increase over time, um, because of that, but I'm, you know, I'm not sure to what extent it will be at this point.
It kind of artificially warps our... Our debt, right?
It does. But if your projects are going to cost you more, you know, it's... It... It probably will move together, you know?
Any other questions?
That's a really awesome summary.
I'm sure it was awesome. I could feel it.
She'll watch the tape.
Yeah.
She'll watch it on cable. Any other questions for Amanda? Anything else you want to share with us?
Um, no, we just appreciate, you, um, you know, working with the city each year. Thanks to Megan for, um, you know, the audit support again this year, and, um, look forward to working with you.
Everything left to me?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So, overall, our city is a good financial ship. So, moving back to the agenda, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. Second. Motion by Rose, second by Schuster. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of minutes of previous meetings. Is there a motion to add? Motion by Grattan. Second by Evans. Any further discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Two minutes of interviewing means, is there a motion to add?
Second.
Second by Schuster, second by Rose. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Yeah, at this time, we'll have the public hearing in charge of the assessments for East Oak Street reconstruction. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing portion of this meeting. Motion by Grattan, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Rose? Aye. Schuster?
Aye.
For those of you in attendance that don't know us, I'm Dan Wagner. I'm your mayor. We have Kay Rose representing the First Ward, along with Richard Evans representing the First Ward. We have the two Third Ward aldermen, which affect your project, uh, which is John Schuster and Dave Grattan. And unfortunately, we're short two aldermen from the Second Ward due to previous conflicts and obligations. This time, I'm going to open it up to Jason Lau. He's our contracted engineer from MSA who did the calculations for assessments. He's going to give you an explanation about how he came up with these numbers. Somebody come up there. Yes? My own means?
Sit here just so my voice carries enough. All right. Thank you, Dan, and, uh, welcome, everyone. So, uh, I know I've recognized a lot of your faces from the public informational meeting, but, um, for any of you that didn't make it to that, I'll just give a brief overview of the reason that we're doing this, and that is to replace the, uh, deteriorating utility and roadway infrastructure, uh, along Oak Street from the Highland Street intersection to the eastern termini. Uh, the project is going to involve the, uh, reconstruction of the sanitary sewer mainline pipe along that section of street, as well as the sanitary laterals from the main to the right-of-way line. It'll also include the water main replacement, uh, along that section, as well as the water services from the main to the right-of-way line. We'll be extending a bunch of new storm sewer up the roadway to address a lot of drainage issues, um, both on... On the roadway itself, but then some... Also some, uh, backyard drainage issues that have happened, um, again, as we talked about at the public informational meeting. And then, the project will also involve then the reconstruction of the street, uh, infrastructure, which involves the replacement of the gravel base of the roadway, the replacement of the asphalt pavement, the replacement of the curb and gutter on both sides of the street, the replacement of the sidewalk on both sides of the street, and then the driveway aprons, um, along the street. Notice was sent out by the city, and that's the reason why we're all here tonight, is about the special assessments, and there was a preliminary assessment report that was prepared. And what I'll do briefly, as Dan indicated, is just go through this, um, as brief as I can, just trying to explain how we, um, calculated, uh, the... The costs for the assessments for each individual property owner along there, and, um, and then just some other general information. And then, I believe at that time, we'll just turn... Or open it up to questions. Okay? So, um, so first off, I guess, to, um, in... In order to calculate the, um, special assessments, we need to first look at, well, what are we... What is the city going to, uh, special assess, um, the residents along this particular project, or what they do on any typical project in the city? And per the city's municipal code, section 12 dot 08 dot 08, um, that section of the ordinance reads that the, um, entire cost of sidewalk, driveways, and curb and gutter along the pro... Project will be paid for by the abutting property owners. Now, there are some... Some credits and things like that for corner lots, but in this case, we don't have any of those, um, those residents here. If you are... If you do happen to be the... The two corner lots that are on Highland, you're not paying for any special assessments along the Highland Street project, so therefore, those credits don't apply to you because you're not paying twice for two sides of your property. So, in this particular case, it's just basically everybody's treated the same with frontage along Oak Street. So, then, um, the... The next step in the process is identifying what are the quantities of those various items. So, for the curb and gutter, for the sidewalk, for the driveways, and how... How are they, um, specific to each individual property owner? Because each property, um, has a different size to it, um, as it abuts against the project. And so, what we first start off with is, we use Dodge County Tax Parcel Mapping. For those of you that are maybe familiar with it, you can go on Dodge County's website. They have a GIS mapping tool on there that shows all the parcel maps, um, and... And parcels within communities and in the townships. We use that mapping to determine what the width of your property is or the frontage, um, that... Of your property that it butts up against the... The proposed project area. And then, using that frontage, we calculated, um, those three various items, the curb and gutter, the driveways, and the sidewalks, um, based on... Based on that frontage, and then also on the... The project construction plans, which, again, we highlighted at that public informational meeting. So, with the curb and gutter, this... The curb and gutter is basically a direct reflection of what your frontage is. If you have a 60-foot wide lot, according to the Dodge Council... Dodge County Tax Parcel Mapping, uh, you would essentially have 60 feet of curb and gutter out in front of your property in the street that, um, counts towards your frontage. Um, the sidewalk is a little bit of a, um, a variable, and that is that, um, there's two different types of sidewalk. There's the sidewalk that falls underneath your driveway, which is a thicker section of... Of concrete, um, to handle the weight of your car and things driving over it. And then, any sidewalk that's not in your driveway is a thinner section of a four-inch thick sidewalk, and those... On those... The four inches and the six inches reflected in the preliminary assessment report. So, the four-inch, um, thick, the... The non-driveway section of sidewalk was determined by taking your overall frontage. So, again, if I'm using the example of a 60-foot wide lot, um, it would be the 60 times the width of the sidewalk. On this particular project, we're... We're using five-foot wide sidewalks. You'd get a total area of that sidewalk, but then what we do is we minus off the sidewalk panels that would fall in your driveway, because, again, that's a separate item that's... That's counted towards the driveways, not towards the... The four-inch thick sidewalk. So, that's how we come up with the quantity of the four-inch thick sidewalk. It's the... The total frontage times the width, minus off whatever your driveway area happens to be, um, within that sidewalk area. And then, obviously, then, the driveway and the driveway section of sidewalk is a, um, is basically just an area calculation of what you have out there right now. Um, I know in some cases, I talked with one person, I'm not sure if you're here tonight or whatever, but, um, what we try to do with the driveways is, we try to basically match what the width of your driveway is behind the sidewalk. And so, if you... If you had a, you know, 16-foot driveway behind the sidewalk, that was kind of the width that we aimed for with a slight flare on it, as we would typically do for everybody, so that, um, it can kind of accommodate the turning movements in and out of your driveway. As... As I mentioned, there's one driveway in particular where they have a wider section of driveway behind the sidewalk, and they actually had a very smaller, um, driveway apron existing in the roadway. Um, and so, if that happens to be your case, or if you... Or for some reason, you want to, um, also increase the width of your driveway apron, we can certainly talk about that, but just know that if you do decide to widen your driveway apron, obviously, then you would be caught... Charged a little bit higher assessment to offset that... That larger-sized driveway as well than what's reflected in the report right now. I know on the report, some of you are probably seeing that there is some asphalt driveway that we... We will be correcting or whatever. That was supposed to be some matching of the driveway that was occurring behind the sidewalk, but after some further review, um, that is not an assessable item, so that will be... That cost will be bore by the city, and we will be removing that out when we do the final assessments for the project. So, so, again, you're... You're primarily just going to be paying for that curb and gutter that's along your frontage, the sidewalk that's behind there, and then the driveway apron that falls in between the sidewalk and the, um, curb and gutter apron. And then, in addition to that cost, you may be noticed in the... In the table that there is also a 10 percent contingency and a 2 percent administration, um, cost that's also built into that. The contingency, um, as it implies, whatever, is these are... These are preliminary, um, quantities right now, and so, you... Obviously, we want to charge you only for what's actually put in. So, if the... If the plan calls out for a, uh, for instance, a, you know, 100-foot square... Square-foot driveway section, and they only... And the contractor only puts in a 90, well, then you'll only be charged for the 90, and what we'll do at the end of the construction project is go out and measure up what the actual dimensions were. But these... This... This report is just to try to give you a... Budgetary number of what you can expect your assessment to be, but these numbers are not final. They will be finalized once the construction project is completed and we're able to measure up, um, specifically, the... The sidewalk areas that were put in at four-inch thick, and then the driveway areas, and the sidewalk that was put in at six-inch thick. Um, lastly, the other thing I'd just like to point out is that, uh, um, overall, the project, um, as shown on like the last page of the assessment report, the total project cost for this was at $1,200... I'm sorry, $1.2 million in change. Again, based on these preliminary numbers, the assessments are... Representing about 16 percent of the overall cost of the project. So, the other, um, essentially 84 percent of it is being paid for by the city. So, I guess that's, uh... I guess the main things that I wanted to highlight. Um, anything else to share? Otherwise, we'll turn it over to questions, but...
I guess just to reiterate that what was spoken at the information meeting, this is one of the final aging streets that we have in the city of Juneau right now. Probably one of the oldest streets in the city of Juneau, and one of them that's been left go for many, many years, so, um, that's towards our focus. We are trying to cut down our infiltration into our treatment plant because of the leaking sewer lines and what have you. This is all going to have a... A huge impact on it, as well as, uh, the stormwater issues there that have been encountered year in and year out in that block. So, um, I know these assessments look huge. Do anybody pay in them? We do offer a six-year payment plan on assessments, three-year taxes, and whatever with the... With the... At the percentage rate that we borrow the money at, and then also a small administration fee if you want to pay it over six years on the property taxes. We try to do everything we can. Our community actually assesses very low or includes very few assessments to the property owner compared to many other communities. I mean, you want to touch upon that in other communities?
Yeah, I mean, all the communities are very... Are very different. I mean, there are some that are lower, there are also some that are higher. And just to give you a sense of the... Of... At least one of the higher ones that I'm aware of that we work with at MSA is, uh, the Village of Cleveland. And their... Their assessments are, um... So, they actually assess, when you... When you break it down, they're... They're probably close to a 60 or to a 75 percent assessment of the total project cost. So, of that 1.2 million, you'd be, you know, if you were in the Village of Cleveland, you'd be paying 60 to 75 percent of that cost. They charge 75 percent of all the roadway costs, the gravel, the curb, every... All that. Um, they actually assess the... For the storm sewer main, um, when it's under a certain size, and that 75 percent that goes to the residents, they charge... They assess for all of the utility laterals, um, from the main to the houses. Any shoulders or ditches, they charge 100 percent for, driveways, they assess 100 percent for, and sidewalk, they assess 100 percent for. So, just to give you some perspective, if you were... If you were somebody that lived in that community and you had, um, a frontage of about, you know, say, an 80... 80-foot front, um, you know, frontage lot or whatever, you'd be paying close to $20,000 to $25,000 for your assessment if you lived in that community. So, as the saying goes, it could be worse.
It's okay, we don't live there.
Exactly, and that's why I... After I found that out, I will never move there.
So, at this time, we'll open it up for questions. I ask that you state your name and your address for the record, and, uh, feel free to ask anything that you'd like to ask.
Do you want to... Uh, this is Joe Shasha, uh, living on East Oak Street in Juneau. If you want to do the...
What's your address, Joe?
What's your address?
PO Box 42. Uh, if you want to stretch that out, what's the procedure for notifying the city? Do you just tack on, uh, 1/6 of it when you pay your taxes, or what?
Megan?
I mean, how... What's the procedure for making that election?
Um, you know, I'd come up with a process. I don't know if maybe you want to make, um... You know, we'd... We'd set up like a payment plan.
Okay. Thank you.
It is up to the property owner to approach City Hall and say, "Yeah, I'd like to break this down."
I'd like to break that down.
Okay.
Is there a hand up over there or something? Yes?
604. Who is the general contractor for this?
For this one, it... The project hasn't been awarded yet, but right now, the low bidder on the project is Sofer Construct... Uh, Sofer Sewer and Water out of, uh, I believe it's Green Bay is where they're out of, based on it, but it's... It's Sofer Sewer and Water.
One of the reasons I asked is, you know, uh, as you know, we... They tore some trees down on our street, and they were... They're told that they didn't have the contract for those particular trees. They shouldn't have come down, but they're down. And so, I just want to make sure that we're not going to see a double charging for that.
Nope. And in fact, the... As luck would have it, the city will actually see a... A reduced cost because of that.
And when are they going to clean up the wood chips? The wood chips?
Scott Carpenter is making a phone call to the general on the other project, and he'll have to take care of that, so... There's a... There's a phone call over there.
You have a question? Oh. Yeah.
Okay. So, you wrote, uh, Keith, 642 East Oak. Um, you broke down how you guys figure out the frontage and whatnot, but you never explained, like, for me, and since I have 76 feet of frontage. Now, is that taking out, when you figure out the curb, the 17 feet for the approach or the 12 feet? Cause you said you charge us on our frontage. Well, if the approach is already there, technically, that's not curb, correct?
No, the... The curb... The curb is continuous along the entire frontage of your property. Obviously, where the dr... Where your driveway is going to be, there's still going to be curb there, but it's just the... Obviously where the, where your driveway is going to be, there's still going to be curb there, but it's just the, the head of the curb, that back portion is going to be knocked down so that it's, it's drivable. But there's still, it's still a, a continuous two and a half foot wide panel of concrete that represents the curb and gutter along there. It's just whether or not it has that curb head on the back of it or whether it's got a driveway section is what we call it.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. My next question is, is when the city or whoever originally put this road in and put the substructure in and put all the curb in, my property is twenty feet short of what your assessment is. There's twenty feet where there is no curb. So if the curb has never been there, why am I paying for the city to have it put in? The original contract, whoever paid for it the first time should have paid for it. I'm not going to pay for it this time, that's not fair. I understand the need for new sidewalk because you guys say we need it because we got to move it eighteen inches. I understand that you, you know, this project has to get done because of infiltration. But I don't understand why I have to foot the bill for twenty feet of curb when whoever put it in in the first place and paid for it in the first place, it never happened.
So you must be on the very eastern end, is that where?
Uh, six forty-two east oak, it's on your map.
Okay.
And then on top of it, you guys have Dan Paul's property over the property line onto my property according to your drawing.
Oh, okay, so yeah, I didn't speak to you about that, yep, okay.
Now I've seen nothing updated, you have not contacted me since I gave you that heads up, nothing. So now I'm here tonight wanting to know what's going to happen with that.
Yep, well, let's, let's first address your first question. So about that curb and gutter that, that wasn't there before, so right now the, the curb just is missing in that section or whatever?
It's not there.
Okay.
It's a finished curb that goes back up towards, or goes to the south towards my house. For twenty feet from there down to Dan Paul's pro, our property line, there is no curb.
Okay, well, I guess what's, what's, how, how it's typically viewed is, is that even, even if you had curb there, even if you don't have curb there, like say somebody else doesn't have any curb or whatever, and, and then the city is going to put curb in, that's, that is still a benefit to you.
But it hasn't been a benefit for the four years I've lived here.
Well, right, because it, it hasn't been, it doesn't exist out there now, but when the project is done, you, that, there will be curb and gutter in that twenty feet so that it will be.
So the city should put the bill for it because it should have been put in originally. And then I want to be having this conversation because then that's just part of the deal. You guys are ripping everything off, great, cool. Can't change that, but why should I pay for it initially?
Well, I guess that, my understanding is, is that that's how, that's how the policy is written. I mean, we certainly can talk individually with you or whatever and, and work that out, but yeah, I guess that's.
Just let me know when and where and I'll be there.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, Neil Whiting, six twenty-four. About five, six years ago, I put in a brand new approach for my driveway. So I'm wondering, is there any way that can work around that without tearing the whole thing out and making me pay for another new one?
I'm sorry, missed the first part of that. So you have, so you have new, you, you have some new sidewalk pan, new sidewalk panels that you put in or?
No, the approach.
Oh, the approach is new?
Yeah.
How, how new?
It's about five, six years old.
So according to the, according to the municipal code, if that was put in within five years and you can provide documentation proving that it was installed within that five years, then, then you would not have to pay assessments on that.
I mean, is there any way of them working around it, just cutting off what they need to and leaving the rest?
Specific, well, for specifically the portion of where the, where the curb, between the curb and the sidewalk or, I mean, the, the roadway where, there's, there's some drainage issues out there that we're trying to deal with. So the, the road is getting tweaked a little bit. So I can't say with any certainty or whatever that your driveway, the way that it exists right now will be able to still work with the new roadway design. And so it still might have to come out for that reason. We, I can certainly look at your address and, you know, we can, we can possibly look at that possibility, but I guess I don't want to get your hopes up and say that we can. I guess it's something we'll have to look at, but there is a possibility that the, the new sidewalk profile and the new curb profile won't, won't work with where your driveway is existing. But again, if you've got the documentation to prove that that was installed within the, the last five years, then yeah, then, then you would not be assessed for that, that driveway approach.
Okay.
So, yes.
I too replaced my driveway. First, the entire driveway from my garage and around behind my house all the way up to the road. Between reclamation, stone and replacing the driveway, costs me a third of what I'm being charged to replace just the apron, the sidewalk, the curb and the gutter. So somewhere's along the line, something's way wrong. I did the work myself, me and my brother. It doesn't say in point fighter, it just says if it's in good condition, not within five, four or five years or whatever with documentation. I paid cash for it, okay? So I don't have documentation, but I have pictures that's in pristine condition. I have fifty percent of my sidewalk is brand new. There's one section that's cracked. I understand that I'd have to pay for that. Something that, that was replaced, not really sure how it cracked, but it did. But the entire apron is basically brand new. I feathered the curb in myself so it matches, you can't even tell. I widened it because the street is so narrow and people park right there, they have to. There's, there's, there's just nowhere to park anywhere there. So I had to widen the apron in order to be able to back out safely into the road without hitting people.
If I, if I may, what, what's your address?
Six four nine, Tom, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry. But it says there's, there's a credit available if, if your apron or sidewalk is in good condition. So as far as I'm concerned, my driveway apron does not need to be replaced. Well, it does now because they came through with utilities and cut it to pieces. But I have pictures of it. I think somebody should go out and take pictures, maybe take some measurements and take pictures and count how many panels don't need to be replaced and that amount of concrete should come off of my assessment. I should not have to pay twice for my sidewalk and my, and my driveway apron. That's just not right. I didn't ask you to come and replace the road, I know it needs to be, but I've already done that portion for you. And so I don't see why I should have to pay for it a second time. I, I'd really like somebody to come and look at it and say, you know what, yeah, you're right. And we're going to take this portion off your assessment and you can just have the damn house.
I, I think.
It's just ridiculous.
I think Scott Carpenter, the city DPW and me can meet with you and then, and then also with you too. So what I'll do is, before you guys leave, I'll, I'll give you my business card and we can get a, a meeting scheduled.
Sure. I'm right across the street from where you and all the law companies are.
Yep, sure.
That sounds good, so.
Yes.
Hi, Tim Gassner. It's a little bit about me for some of them who don't know that. I was the superintendent of law utility here for several years. It's according to what the mayor said, you know, that street has been bad for a long time. So my disappointment with this whole thing is that we put her off that long. It's been on the agenda for twenty years to be done. And now we put it on the agenda at the time when inflation and everything costs four times what it did before. There's nobody on our street that makes or lives in a two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar house. No, no one. So now we're paying exorbitant amounts of money for this curb gutter and sidewalk. He's got new stuff, he's got a problem. They all have different things with it, all right? So I mean, this is kind of crazy right now. What they should have did is kicked the can down the road for another two years. But the infrastructure underneath is extremely terrible. Should have been done a long time ago before two or three other street projects were done. The other thing is, I guess we, we qualify for a CDBG program, which is only taking in Highland Street. So it's not doing anything for us on Oak Street.
That's correct.
There, there are other grants available that would help us out. And the reason I know that is because I brought a young woman to a meeting four years ago when we were doing some different things. She's from a, an engineering firm in, in Portage. And she, I met her at a, a real water convention and she gave a presentation up there and she knows grants. She knows them. She knows how to get money. She told me today, I talked to her on the phone this morning, she told me about Marcus' aunt. They got all kinds of street projects going out there and she's got money for them that almost covers three quarters of the cost of everything. There's money available. She says, right now it's tremendous how much money is available. So I'm disappointed that the city hasn't done anything with, with grant writing and done anything other than one grant. There are monies out there available. If MSA can't find it or doesn't know how to do it, then we need to get somebody who does. Let's get on this.
And we looked into different options for this street and, and actually we did a CDBG income survey for this. This, this block did not qual, income qualify.
Well, okay, we'll, we'll touch on that.
And that was one.
There were some that, that were, people came out and asked us how much you made. People were reluctant to say that. What she told me today was, she, there's a, there's a dollar a month. Either you make above it or below it. Okay, so you don't have to answer how much you make, just answer do you above it or below it? So a lot of it, well, we didn't, we didn't qualify down on our own block because some people didn't answer. And I know they didn't.
I don't ever remember being asked that. Furthermore, it doesn't matter how much I make, just because somebody's got a lesser paying job than me doesn't mean I should pay more for something. You know, taxes maybe, but the taxes already are, are coming out. I pay those. If I, if I add this on at the end of the year, you know, I, my taxes are extra. I'm not going to get a bigger check from the bank, I'm going to have to come up with that. Just because I make more money than some other people on my street or anywhere else in town or less money or whatever, doesn't mean I got six thousand dollars just laying around pissed away on a road. I'm a single father. My neighbors just had a baby, they're young kids and I know that they would not have the money for this.
This is going to be a tremendous hardship for certain people.
Oh yeah, people are going to have to sell and move, you know, something.
So if there is any grant money out there, which I know there is, is an LR, LRIP grant that we can qualify for. It comes through the county and I believe that's available now again, it's maybe a couple of years. I mean, that's one of them and there's many others. Her name is Elizabeth. Dan, you saw her. She's, that's what she does. And she, today we talked for an hour.
People that do that too.
But obviously they didn't find any money. We got to find some money. We got to do something. Right now concrete, when Tom talked about what that driveway cost him, all we do is garage. This is costing four times that. Back then, concrete wasn't a hundred and seventy dollars a yard.
Yeah, there's no doubt about that. I mean, prices are up right now, it's just, it's just the way that the market is.
Right now, we're doing it down in an area where we live in the oldest homes and the oldest damn street in the city. Where do you think we're getting this from? I don't know, you look around the room, everybody can say the same thing, can't you?
Mm-hmm. If this goes on my taxes, I'm going to be forced to sell and move. I have a five-year-old little boy. I was recently divorced, yes, I'm not ashamed of that. My problem is, is I live paycheck to paycheck, making sure that he has everything he needs and I can get back to work to work. I work cash jobs, I work everything I possibly have in hand. And then to come home to a seventy-three hundred dollar bill that should have been taken care of fifteen, twenty years ago when prices were cheap. This will literally put me on the brink of having to sell my home and move out at this time. And have you, have any of you on this board or in front of me right now have looked for housing? Have you? Have any of you looked for housing right now?
It's out of this world.
Yeah.
It's out of this world.
Exactly, so where am I supposed to live? Where am I supposed to go? How am I supposed to tell my five-year-old son that we have to move and we got to find someplace else to live? Unless standards, lower standards? Because the city of Juneau didn't go out and get some damn grants to help us all out? We pay in taxes every year. We bank on knowing exactly what we owe you guys every year. Yes, there's a little inflation here and there for school projects, whatever, whatever, you get that, I understand that. And I'm sure everyone sitting behind me next to me understands that too. But to come up with seventy-three hundred dollars? Well, you can put it on your taxes for seven years. Yeah, my house payment goes up. I'm a single father. I bring home thirty-four hundred dollars a month. I pay a thousand eighty a month. What do you think that's going to do to my taxes? You going to come and help me? You going to buy me groceries every couple of weeks so I can survive? Any of you? I know every one of my neighbors would have my back if they needed it, I'd help them, they'd help me. But what's the city going to do to help us? This is ridiculous. Why are we doing this on a year where inflation is what, forty, fifty percent? Who the hell would ever think that we can afford this as a community? I'm not asking the city to foot the bill, I'm asking the city to go out there and get some grants. Hell, if you want help, it looks to me like you have twenty or so people here that will do any legwork you ask us to. Why aren't we doing this?
I don't want you to think that there wasn't any effort made.
I, I don't, I'm not saying there isn't, like I know you.
No, I mean, there's, there's definitely been.
But obviously there's more options out there. Because if you can make a single phone call and there's this, this grant that's possible through the county, there's got to be money that.
So I have looked into the grant with the county and that's something that's still being worked out. Unfortunately, it's not anything that, you know, happens overnight. So I am aware of that. We did qualify for an LIR or LRIP grant for, you know, a minimal amount. It looks like previous to when I started, it was less than like ten thousand, but it was something. But, you know, I have been working with MSA, you know, and some different ladies that, you know, do the grant stuff. And it sounded like nothing, we didn't qualify for much or anything. And I.
I am not picking on you guys.
And you know, I just, I just want to tell you because the, the effort has been made.
Yes, I, I believe you have, but you know, that's not all you do every day.
But you know, maybe that's, I can, you know, hook up with you and I can get the information from you.
This young lady, that's all she does.
So.
So at this point in time, at this era, when things are so expensive, we need to get somebody in here that that's all they do and they know where it is.
Yeah, yep, and we can always touch base. I can get that information from you and, you know, I'm more than willing to reach out and, yeah.
This takes time. I was on there for, for a couple of days, my God, there's so much stuff to read. And then find out that at the end you'll qualify for it. But I mean.
Right, right, so, you know, it's, it's something that we can talk about. But I want everyone to, to know that the attempt was there and, you know, the city was trying to, to find some grant money. But it sounds like, you know, we either didn't qualify or.
Some of those grants are not worth, you know, you, you might get something, but all the red tape or all the administration that goes into it, if, if it's not a big enough project or you don't get enough money towards it, it, it's just not feasible to, to go after it. I mean, and there, there were some of those cases where we could have gotten something, but in the end it would have cost the city more because of all the hoops and the red tape that you have to jump through. Or in some cases you got to pay federal wage rates and, you know, there's just, there's different components to it, as you mentioned, or whatever. And some of it.
I get that.
Comes down to a qualification, some of it comes down to.
Somebody that has been doing it and that's all they do, that's not all you do either. I mean, there's, you've got people in the office that's not all they do all day.
Yes, it is. The ladies that she, the ladies that she mentioned, we have a whole team that's dedicated to funding and that's all they do.
And that's all you can find is one grant?
That's all that, that was feasible for the projects as they stood.
Not what it's told to be.
Well, you and I can, you know, we can touch base, but I also want to throw out there, you know, Dan and myself, we went in front of, you know, Dodge County to see if we could get some ARPA funding for some road projects that are going on. You know, it sounds like we were in the line for, for some money. I asked her about, you know, five hundred some thousand and I haven't gotten a response yet. But I'm taking that as a good thing because we haven't been denied.
Exactly.
So, you know, there's been attempts reaching out and doing different things, so just so everyone's aware of that.
I'm sorry if I'm getting a little rough this way or whatever, I'm getting down on you, I don't know what you've all done. But just the conversation I had with her this morning, it was pretty uplifting, like there's money, there's got to be money out there. She knows it.
Yeah.
You know?
Been trying.
I had her out here for one meeting and she, she gave a presentation for like an hour. She could talk about it for an hour.
Well, we'll touch base then.
I think most of that conversation is more geared towards utility.
It doesn't matter, she does all these projects.
Like she didn't share anything as far as roadways and stuff.
Well, she knows that too. Plus, you know, we're doing infrastructure on the street, which is all part of it.
Well, you weren't going to do one without the other.
No. So that's my opinion about things. Other than the assessment on what you're going to do about any of that is what it is. Costs are costs. But I'm just disappointed we didn't find some way of getting us some money and plus the timing. I mean, right now when everything is higher to kite, we're all struggling to pay for groceries, gas and whatever else. Now we're going to get this whammy, you know? And like I said, nobody lives in a two, three, four hundred thousand dollar house on our end of the street. We're on the, we're on the south side of tracks.
On top of that, we're not going to have any access to our homes. We don't have the bike trail behind us like Highland Daff does, you know? Am I, 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 I'm seriously considering just piling all my trash at the end of my driveway because I'm not going to walk it two and a half, three blocks down the road to have somebody pick it up and then try and figure out where my trash cans are. The guys that come and pick it up now will pick it up on, on the, on the curb where I put it and it's usually laying in the approach of my driveway because, well, I guess just because they're going to consider it. But it, well, I'm trying to be polite. But I'm not going to walk my cans down at the end of the block to do that, you know? I just will not do it. I'll pile it up if I have to and at the end of the year or whenever this is done, then somebody can come and get it all. Because it's ridiculous. How many people on this street want to, it's, Tim's further down than I am for crying out loud. You want to walk your trash out of the corner? I, I, you know?
No, I don't know what they're going to do with that yet, Tom.
It's, it's just ridiculous, you know? If this leads into the winter time, am I supposed to snow blow a path over to Center Ass and my wife can walk to her car to get to work in the morning?
Well, I can, I can tell you something. When they did Leonard Street, the, the people up there always were, the, the construction crew always gave them a path to get in and out. And the guys right now that went working down there, they move out of the way of the garbage truck and they actually took the garbage cans out to them. They, they're, they're pretty decent. I, I don't know if we really have to worry about that.
Well, sure hope not.
I don't think so. I really don't.
I just feel like we should be able to have access to our driveways. I got two or three thousand dollars worth of tools in my truck at any given time. I, you know, I mean, I don't want to park it on some other street where I can't keep an eye on it, you know? I mean, it's locked up in my driveway for crying out loud, you know? I, I, what if I got to run out and grab something and I got to go to a. You know, I, I, what if I gotta run out and grab something, I don't know, I gotta go to another street over? You know, it's just ridiculous, it's, it's, it's a headache, I understand it's stuff, it's gotta be done. But like, right now, they dig up the road, certain times of the day, you can't get through whatever it is, where it is, but then by a certain time, you're able to get to your house, you know? I'm hoping that that's going to be a possibility for us, even if, even if it's driving down the sidewalk, I don't care, I got four of them.
Tom, I don't, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, I seriously don't. After, after they did up on, on Leonard, nah.
Yeah, I mean, and the contractor is aware, is aware of the access issues too, and so obviously, that, that is part of their contract, is to, you know, do what they can to accommodate you guys, both on the garbage side and on the access side. Again, as you mentioned, there is gonna be times when, yeah, they, they may have things shut down for a little bit, because they're, they're also trying to get the work done.
Understand.
Um, you know, and trying to minimize how long this is gonna drag out for everyone, but yeah, I mean, I've already had several conversations with the contractor, they're well aware of the concerns with the access, and so, you know, it's, it's just gonna be one of those things where we get to construction, they're gonna do what they're gonna try to do to accommodate, and if, if, if people still, um, feel that, you know, more is necessary, I mean, feel free to contact the city and we can kinda continue to work with the contractor to make it better, if, if, if there's a way to do that.
Sure, fair.
So they, they know that too, 'cause emergency services still have to come down if something goes wrong.
Yeah, yep, yep.
So I mean, they, they, they will keep doing that, I, I don't have any problem with that.
Yes.
How long do you think this is gonna drag out?
So the, so the contractor is looking to start here probably in September, is what I've been told. Um, they're, they're trying to get some of their material deliveries, and again, with the supply, you know, issues and, and whatnot, uh, they're, they're still trying to get that figured out, but what we've been told is, uh, towards kinda later September, maybe mid-September, they wanna get started. And then, they wanna get the bulk of the utility work down and get gravel down on the roadway. Um, they don't, we don't think they're gonna be able to get, uh, uh, much of the paving, if any of it done this year, just because we don't wanna be paving when it's too cold, and then we get a bad product, um, uh, as far as the paving work goes, so more than likely, whatever, what they're gonna do is try to get the gravel course down of ass, uh, of, uh, of, for the roadway, have, give you guys that, the ability to access in and out during the winter times, the city's gonna do their best to keep that plowed. Um, and then the paving work will happen, then, you know, first, first, in the spring, or whatever, once the asphalt plants and stuff open back up.
So we won't be assessed until after everything is done?
Correct.
So it probably will do it so much.
Correct.
So now, with you saying that, this is the latest they've ever started a street project in town, you know that. So the last time they did Center Street, first off, the sidewalks are like this, I don't wanna see that.
Yeah.
I don't wanna see that, that's not gonna fly. The other thing is, it got into deer hunting season. Oh, we're all taking off to go deer hunting, so we're hurrying up and doing things half-bass. Um, hmm, I hope that don't happen.
September seventeenth.
Yeah.
Bullhunting all open up. And if they're anything like me, that's where your thought goes, you start getting to Friday, I make construction, I know how it goes, hey, guys, I'm leaving, I'm new today, sorry, I can't do it.
It's just gonna be underground utilities on the gravel base, nothing outside of the curb is gonna be basically touched until.
Other than the laterals, correct, right, but yeah, so I mean, the sidewalk would stay in place for as long as possible, other than, uh, uh, as I said, a few cuts through there, or whatever, for the utilities, but they'll probably put, I would assume, put back some temporary gravel through those panels of sidewalk that got taken out. So again, that's still an accessible path on each side of the roadway, um, the, the road will be, you know, um, disturbed or whatever, as part of the utility work, but again, they're planning on bringing in some gravel and, and trying to keep at least one lane open during construction, so that people can come and, come and go, with the exception of if they're doing something right in the way of that, or whatever, for an hour or two, and then get, they'll get it open back up as soon as they can.
So I, I guess, I mean, I, this isn't the meaning to bring this up, but I guess, 'cause I missed the first couple, 'cause I wasn't in town. So, but how, how wide is this creek gonna be? I guess I didn't look. And, there's somebody told me you're gonna allow parking on both sides, isn't that gonna be kinda like, not changing anything? Like you, like Tom said, would've made his driveway wider, I was gonna ask if I could do that too, 'cause my god, you can't get out of that thing.
Yep, yeah, well, thirty, it's, uh, it's thirty-seven feet back to back, so from the, so basically, the, the, the drivable section of it would be thirty-six feet wide, and that's, that's meeting cities.
So right now, it's what, twenty-four?
Twenty-two.
Twenty, yeah, twenty. Yeah, it's about twenty-three, twenty-two feet. If you cut, if you count the, the curb and gutter that's out there right now.
So you're taking about four feet from each side?
Yeah, yeah, but it's pretty much an even, even take on either side.
Pretty much duplicate depot street.
Yep.
Why, why is the sidewalk moving on one side and not the other?
Why is it moving?
Yeah.
Because, because it wasn't really installed where, where it belonged on the, on the lot line, or whatever before.
Looks normal to me on either side.
Well, on the, well, which, which side are you referring to, Tim?
On the north side.
On the nor, the north side is the normal side, or the north, the north side's where it's moved, seems like it's moving.
That's where it's gonna move it.
Yeah. And on that side, on, on that side, whatever, it's, it's currently like two feet or so off of the, off of the lot line, and from the city's standard, we want that about six inches off the lot line. Or off the right-of-way line.
So it's, it's gotta move north.
The sidewalk is gonna shift, yeah, closer to the, closer to the right-of-way line, so it's gonna shift a little more, on that side.
But, but the tree border is the same on both sides of the street right now, so how come that was done now?
I don't know, that was done how many years ago, it was before my time.
And mine too. We can't ask that guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, four hundred block presently doesn't line up with the three hundred block, if you go down the street there and see how the jocks in, or the north.
Well, that don't matter, he goes take sidewalk around telephone poles and playwrights.
So how wide is that terrace? You, you want eighteen inches, you're moving a sidewalk, or?
Yeah, so because the sidewalks came out, I mean, it's still gonna be, it's, it's still gonna be an eight-and-a-half-foot terrace on each, on each side.
The neighbors next to me, the sidewalk's gonna be at their porch.
And then six forty-one, my neighbor and I are driving there together, and then our proches are apart.
Your name, Brian?
What, what's that?
Your name.
Brian Street, about six forty-one, he's the pole. And there's five feet of grass in there, and on your little picture, you show that concrete all the way through.
Between, between the shared drives, or the aprons?
Between the, the proches.
Okay.
And, uh, but if you're saying you're only assessing me on what you measured.
So do you want the grass to stay in the middle there?
Well, but I, no, I would like the concrete, but I'd pay that much more for it, 'cause then on your picture, you show it all the way through, and that is, it's together.
Okay, well, if, if we put it all the way through, then you would be assessed for it, if you'd want it, if you want that grass to minimize, or to keep that as small as possible, we can certainly make that change, obviously, with the contractor, before we get to that point, but we just need to know that.
So you're saying, you're, you're saying your drawing is wrong then, that?
I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying, what we did was, is because we recognize that as a shared driveway, when you, when you're trying to put the taper in there, so that when you're trying to turn it into your driveway versus the other person's, you're not going, driving over that grass, we filled that in, or whatever, as what we thought would be an improvement for you, and obviously, on other.
And it will be, I agree, but not at a hundred and forty bucks a yard.
And then, and, and as I said, or whatever, if you don't want that, because you would rather keep your, your assessment cost down, we can certainly put it back the way that it was, and, 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 just how, how it'll be.
'Cause seventy-one hundred dollars left, swabbed already, the sidewalk's all.
Was any of the sewer laterals adjusted?
Pardon?
Was any of the sewer laterals adjusted, has anybody replaced them, or you got a contractor who does that?
The, for the, for the private side, or?
From the home to the road, to the, well, from the home to the sidewalk.
I can answer that for you, so I just had Beaver Plumbing over to do a bunch of work, and he, when he's walking outside, he says, have you talked to anybody about replacing, 'cause they will burst from the house to the road, they have a guy that will come out and assess it for you, more money.
You can have the, yeah.
Um.
Another fifteen hundred bucks or so.
Uh, no, thirty-five hundred to four thousand.
Oh!
And we've had a code for five?
Oh!
So, on top of having six or seven grand, just to whip right out of your pocket, pull another four, you can have your, your lateral solid all the way out to the road. But Beaver Plumbing will come and burst it for you.
Hmm, sweet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Jeremy Jacobson, six seventy-five, I have a gravel approach, do I have to pay for an approach until I already don't have one, in fact, don't have one?
In between the sidewalk and the curb?
Yeah, I'm at the dead end.
Yep, yeah, you're at the.
I'm all gravel.
And you're all, you're all gravel, even up to the edge of the roadway, just because of the way that it dead-ends right now, or whatever, right?
Well, how's the dead end gonna get done, or you putting a cul-de-sac, or?
That, that's being explored to try to put, at least fit something in the end there, but.
Because, well, then, if you're gonna put in an approach, then trucks are just gonna run over and crack the cement anyways. I, I work in cement, so I know it's gonna crack.
Yeah.
Trucks have to have it before they approach.
I mean, with, the, the city hasn't made any final decisions on that, but we have looked at, you know, what, you know, could we fit like a, a hammerhead turnaround at the end, which is basically like a T section, or, or actually trying to fit a smaller cul-de-sac, it might, it won't meet, um, it won't meet what the city ordinance is, but at least we can fit something in there, so that it, you know, to try to keep, you know, cars, when they have to turn around, out of those, those driveways potentially.
I'm not worried about the cars, I'm worried about the trucks, the way the trucks will crack the approach, if you guys enter the approach, if that's the case, I'd rather just keep the gravel.
Okay.
That hasn't been an option in the past, Jason.
Yeah, I know, I.
Well, no, I'm just asking because.
I didn't mean, okay, I, I, I hear you, I hear you.
I was gonna say.
If one of the city trucks cracked your approach, I'm not gonna pay for it to get fixed anymore.
Well, you, you've got an interesting.
Yeah, they, they're, they're constantly turning around from my driveway.
You've got an interesting thing there, I don't think that's your driveway. I think that's in that street right of way. Uh, his driveway isn't there. I don't know how you deal with that.
Would you be opposed losing your terrace area in the construction of a, of a cul-de-sac there?
What, for a new road?
If we, we're, unfortunately, we weren't able to acquire any land from the, from the buddy, farmland.
Oh, you won't, yeah, I, I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna continue that street.
No, no, you're not following what I'm saying. We weren't able to acquire land from the.
Oh, you're up from the field?
From the field, from the property owner there. Would you be opposed if we did a miniature cul-de-sac at the end, and you lost your terrace area in front of your house? In other words, the roadway would come up to your sidewalk?
I, I guess we have to talk about it, I guess, yeah.
Well, that would actually eliminate his driveway approach then.
Right, yeah.
It would be part of the roadway.
I, I have to see your picture, some kind of diagram, what you're talking about.
As, as with those gentlemen, I'll give you a, one of my cards, or whatever, before you leave, if, if possible, and then just reach out to me, and we can get a time set up and talk to you out there, and we can kinda show you in the field, kinda what we're thinking.
Yeah, you're, you're more than I knew than seeing what they was talking about.
Yep.
Jason?
Yes.
David Shaw, six-six-seven, uh, so you said you're taking four feet from, from our side. How do you guys plan on making sure that us that have the steep driveways aren't gonna bottom out?
Just because we, we still have.
Are they raising the street?
We, we are, in, in some, where, wherever there is that issue, like, I think, I think you're right, yours was one of those cases where it was a steeper driveway. So yeah, the road is getting picked up slightly, so that we can keep your driveway approach to what, what's deemed the typical standard, which is around a six to, six to seven percent slope, whatever, or, or in some cases, it's, it's less, but trying to kinda hit that, that sweet spot with slopes, or whatever, and not get too crazy, where it's gonna be, you know, like a twelve percent, where you might bottom out if you had a low, you know, low riding car.
How are you gonna do that, 'cause the properties on the south side of the road, they're almost level. So if you raise the road, now the road's higher than those properties, so the quantities get a little bit dropped.
The cross slopes are, are, are tweaking a little bit.
Yeah?
So it's, so, so the curb.
That's a pretty delicate thing, maybe, are you really trust those contractors to do that?
They do it all the time.
Okay.
And that's, that's what, and that's why we're out there observing, that's why we're out there, we, we stake it for them.
Well, South Highland has that.
Yeah?
And if you look at it, the road is crested on the east side.
It is, yes.
Yeah, and did a nice job. So we're assuming it can be public.
I hope so.
Any other questions from the phone?
When, when is everything gonna be filmed, when will we be wanting to know exactly what we're gonna be assessed?
Um, so, when, when the construction project is done, which you, you all see kind of out there, 'cause all the paving work will be done at that point, the, the, the grass will start to grow, whatever, at that point, that's when we'll measure up what the final quantities of the concrete and the assessable items are here. We'll prepare a final, final assessment report, which is gonna look exact, pretty much like this, except for the numbers, the quantity numbers will be adjusted for each individual resident to represent what was measured out in the field, and then those will be available, um, to, to view again with Megan, or whatever, and then the city will act on, again, um, working with you guys on the assess, on, on the assessments, whether you guys wanna pay that all in a lump sum, or whether you wanna work with the city on a payment plan, or, you know, whatever your individual case would be.
There are some people that aren't here, and there's some people that may not have internet access, there's some people that work during the week, and they don't have access to city hall because they're closed. So are you going to be sending notices to people, letters to people?
Yeah, yeah, so, same, um, you know, with the notices about tonight, you guys all received that, um, we can communicate that way, we've been trying to update, you know, the website, to make it a little bit, you know, more accessible. You know, with any updates on road projects, we've been putting them on there.
Right.
Um, I'm aware that, you know, people don't have access to, to the internet, but, you know, if somebody has a question about something, and they worked during the day, you know, they can always call and leave a message, and I can touch base when they're available, or or provide them information that they may need, or email.
They don't know that, so I guess what I'm saying is it would be, I think, advantageous, no matter what, you communicate through US Mail.
And we do that always.
Okay.
Yep, well, I will always send you something in the mail.
Another thing, a question I have is for MSA, I don't see any labor on these, these estimates. Um, do you ever pinpoint what the labor cost or all these are, 'cause labor seems to be.
The way that, the way that the bids are done is the contractor provides the, what the total price is, and that includes not only to purchase and acquire the materials that they might be installing, but it also includes the labor, their, their equipment needs, or whatever, to install that work, so it's all figured into that price, but we don't necessarily see a breakdown of labor versus materials versus equipment, unless we specifically ask for it, for, you know, there's a few reasons why that happens. But generally, the unit prices that were given by the contractor are just what that total cost is gonna be encompassing all of those items.
Jason, you wanna share with them, you have the bid totals from the other contractors, it was a fairly, fairly close-knit, um, cost as far as from first through third and fourth contractor?
So on, so on this particular project, we had three, three contractors, Soper, as I mentioned before, was the low bidder, with a base bid of one point, or one million, one, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fif, uh, three hundred dollars and fifty cents. The second-place contractor was Copland and Keenness, um, and they had one, one million, two hundred and ninety-four hun, uh, thousand, twenty-five dollars and twenty cents, and then the, um, third contractor was Wuleski Construction, and they had one million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy. So, again, just roughly rounding, just to repeat those numbers, it was one point one million and change versus one, almost one point three million and change, and then one point, almost one point seven. It was kinda the spread.
I just wanted to mention, I'm Nick All, electric superintendent, um, as many of you guys know, we've been in the area working on the electric underground. For some reason, you guys have issues with, uh, the sidewalks, where they ripped out to go underground to your house, where the blacktop, uh, grannies are settling out. We will be monitoring that, adding as needed, uh, as this project goes on, so if you have questions, feel free to call, and we can get that handled up.
Any other questions tonight? I guess at this time, then, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of me. Motion by Meros, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? We'll call both, please.
Meros?
Hi.
Schuster?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, just wanna thank everybody for coming, uh, all your comments will be, be taken under advisement, uh, we're constantly looking to weigh this, to cut costs and save money, so if there are any opportunities as far as available grants and whatever, be assured, we will be looking at them. And I guess the only other thing I'd like to mention, you talked a little bit about those sewer laterals, um, state has been coming down very hard on local utilities, there will be an ordinance in the very near future to mandate replacement of those sewer laterals. So, even if you don't wanna do it now, you're probably gonna be forced to do it later, so I, I would suggest if you got the opportunity, pipe bursting, I'm well aware of, it works very well, I've been working with contractors over in Beaver Dam right now on three different projects over there. Um, super doesn't tear up your front yard, you can get underneath porches that extend over the top of your, your lateral, and like this gentleman said, it's a one-piece pipe that comes from your basement out to your street. But like I said, the DNR is fighting to cut down infiltration into the treatment plants, so they're, they are gonna be requiring us to formulate a, an ordinance. So, that'll be an expense, like you said, that you don't wanna hear about now, but I'd rather tell you now, that if you're looking to go out and borrow money for this project, include that, that sewer lateral, because it's maybe something that you will be forced, as well as the water, for some reason, they provide funding for that. the water. For some reason, they provide funding for that, because that's a safety, health and safety issue. So they do provide funding for the water replacement if you have a lead water service or galvanized water service. But unfortunately, there's no funding right now available for the sewer lateral replacement. So if you know you got clay or a galvanized pipe going out to the street or cast iron going out to the street, certainly look and get ahold of a contractor to give you the options. Open ditch digging is still the cheapest, but you still have the mess and the cleanup there afterwards, and restoration and settling and what have you. So just word of advice.
So is the city willing to go out and contact X number of companies and give us kind of an idea?
No, that's all done individually. You'll have to handle that on your own, because it's inside. You're gonna have a new pipe out to your property line. That's included in this project and no cost to you.
So what I'm trying to figure out though is if I go out and I get a quote, how am I supposed to know or how's my contractor supposed to know when my pipe is gonna be exposed? So we don't have to dig the hole to re-dig the hole to connect to the city.
Most of those private contractors will get ahold of the mainline contractor, because the mainline contractor right now, if nobody gets ahold, they're gonna tie onto what you got.
Yep.
So the digging will be inside the proposed sidewalk. So, you know, it'll be on your property line, so whether you do it in coordinate, in connection with the project, or later on, does make a difference. You'd like to get in there, though, before the sidewalks in there, so you don't scuff that all up.
That's what I'm saying. So if we can do it now.
On Depot Street, we've been having some customers that have reached out here in the street project to local homeowners in the area to do those replacements at the time to help cost, because they are digging, putting that pipe behind the sidewalk. So during that time of construction would be the best time to contact and by all means get a you know, a phone call early enough to get those, you know, figures made up beforehand.
Wait, you took that timeframe with it? Actually, no.
Any other questions before you leave? Appreciate you all coming tonight. You're welcome to hang around for the rest of the meeting. This is gonna be going on tight? Yes. So you said that you haven't been coming through yet?
I'm not. Haven't decided if I'm going to. I just had, well, they were introducing one of their houses. And so on the way out the back door, he says, you know, when they hear the street, you know, we can replace that lateral for you. They've had other estimates done on Oak Street already. And he says, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're trying to get them to come out. You're gonna be open. Okay, that's time to move on to the meeting.
They breached me big time. They told me I didn't do half what I asked them to do, and then they charged me, and I didn't do it myself. But that's besides the point. But he did tell me that estimates that are around thirty-five hundred to four thousand.
Next item of business is approval of payment of bills, checks for quarter, eight thousand, hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty cents. No electronic or vouchers, electronic transfers, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, fifty-one dollars and ninety cents. entertain a motion to approve the payment of bills? Motion by Grattan, second by Schuster. And further discussion, questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Grattan?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Meros?
Meros, aye. I crossed you off because I wasn't expecting you to be here. I'm all confused.
Payment of bills have been approved. Next, we have reports of officials, resolution twenty-nine, twenty-two. Approved mayorial appointments. Whereas the mayor has diligently searched for individuals willing to give of themselves by serving on the Board of Appeals, CDA, Plan Commission and Recreation Committee. And whereas the mayor wishes to make the following appointments. Rick Skolman, Board of Appeals, eight expires eighth of two thousand twenty-four. Robert Offell, Board of Appeals, eighth of two thousand twenty-four. Ken Steffen, Board of Appeals, eighth of two thousand twenty-four. Jerry Stulzmann, CDA, eighth of two thousand twenty-six. Jerry Stulzmann, Fire and Police Citizen Committees, eighth of two thousand twenty-five. Josh Nichols, Plan Commission, eighth of two thousand twenty-five. Tom Schulte, Plan Commission, eighth of two thousand twenty-five. Bruce Olmer, Plan Commission, eighth of two thousand twenty-five. Ken Steffen, Plan Commission, eighth of two thousand twenty-five. Wendy Josmima, Recreation, eighth of twenty-three. Amy Walters, Recreation Committee, eighth of twenty-four. Jennifer White, Resolution Recreation Committee, eighth of two thousand twenty-five. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau, Juneau, accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by this Common Council City of Juneau this ninth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
How was the passage of resolution twenty-nine, twenty-two?
Motion by Meros, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Most of these are re-ups. Jerry Stulzmann is new to the CDA and the Fire and Police Citizen Committee. At this time, I'll entertain any questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Meros?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-two is passed. Next, we have resolution thirty, twenty-two. Resolution authorizing public improvement and levying special assessments against benefited property in the City of Juneau, Wisconsin.
Whereas the Common Council of the City of Juneau, Wisconsin, have the public hearing at seven P M. on the ninth day of August, twenty twenty-two. For the purpose of hearing all interested persons concerning the preliminary resolution or report on the proposed public improvements along a portion of East Oak Street and preliminary assessments against benefited properties and heard all persons who decided to speak at the meeting. Now therefore be it resolved, the Common Council of the City of Juneau, Wisconsin determines as follows. One, the preliminary assessment report, a copy of which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein as if fully set forth herein, including the plans and the assessments well set forth therein, is adopted and approved. Two, payment for the improvement shall be made by assessing the entire cost of the property benefited as indicated in the report. Three, assessments shown on the report represent and exercise police power and have been determined on a reasonable basis and are hereby confirmed. Four, assessment shall be due within thirty days of the billing date. Assessments may be paid in cash or in
Six annual.
Six annual installments to the city clerk. Installments shall be placed on the next tax roll after the due date for collection and shall bear interest at the rate of
To be determined.
To be determined per annum on the unpaid balance from the due date. Five, the city clerk shall publish this resolution as a class one notice under chapter nine eighty-five, Wisconsin statute, and six, after construction is complete and the final assessment amounts have been determined, the city clerk shall mail a statement of the amount of final assessment due date and an explanation of payment options to every property owner whose name appears on the assessment roll, whose post office address is known, or can with reasonable diligence be ascertained of. All right. And so I would move to pass it to resolution thirty, twenty-two.
Motion by Meros, third, second. Second by Evans. Any further discussion?
I would simply point out that you referred to all the comments this evening in that you've had a lot of diligence as far as looking for grants, but I would encourage you to just go through that again to see if there's anything that can be done to offset the cost, because it is a significant cost. I know you've been doing that. You've been doing that very diligently, but just
Yeah, I will.
Look one more time.
Will do.
And then, of course, you're gonna look at these individual situations that have been raised. And also to point out that anybody that does pay in installments, they will pay interest. And a lot of times that interest is up around five or six percent. You have any idea what it is right now?
Below two, so we were borrowing money.
So you will get a good break on that. So if you're looking below two, that's good.
I'll probably do put an administration charge on.
Right. I'm gonna verify with Jason what that would look like.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
You know, people, either we approve this or we have electric utility patch back all the cuts that they put in everybody's driveway, I guess. Wait till the price of concrete comes down. Think that's highly unlikely? I think we're in a world right now, we don't have a crystal ball to look into, but I'm thinking if you talk to anybody, any experts in the field, this might level off, but I don't think we'll ever return to pre-COVID prices. I mean, you could have said, yeah, should have, you know, many years ago, taken care of this project, but regardless of your opinion, I think we've we've stuck to a road replacement policy or schedule that made sense. And this one had to have Highland done before this street was done. So, you know, this Highland Street is the receiving site. Yep, we can put it all back, you know, just the way it was and leave Oak play for another couple of years, but I we're not gonna be able to regrow Joe's tree. That one's gone already.
That's okay.
But I guess right now, I think we're in a position we have to claw forward with the, you know. I feel bad. I mean, this is the toughest job that a common council has to do, is assess people or agree to assessments of property from road construction projects. You're never a popular person. It's not like we sat on our hands on this and just waited for the price to get up. It just happened to be the way the schedule came out on these streets.
Oh, and you're taking a bid that's four hundred thousand dollars less than your high bid?
Yeah. This is the type of thing that there was another thing that triggered this was the lead lead replacement lateral program that came. Then we know we have lead underneath that street. We only have a window of opportunity for maybe one or two years to get funding for that. So it's a win-win regardless. And like I said, I think we're very reasonable in what we assess our property owners compared to other communities. I'm understanding some of those people in Beaver Dam on that South Spring project, they're up to twenty-some thousand dollars on their storefrontages with the sidewalks. They're even paying for street lighting, I'm understanding, and water and sewer infrastructure as well, so.
The sewer and water was on the private, their private side stuff or whatever, because they had to, again, go through the basements and whatnot. Yeah, there is a portion of street lighting that they're responsible for.
So I don't think we can do any less, or I mean, we certainly would have the opportunity to assess the property owner more, but this has been the consistency that we followed for the last twenty, thirty years here in this community. And since I've been mayor, I've made sure that every street gets treated the same. There's no no consideration, you know, oh, no, we're not gonna put sidewalk and curb there just because, you know, whatever. So this is certainly a replacement program here where there wasn't that argument. I the gentleman forgets that there's a gutter apron that's ninety percent of your gutter, even though you lost the back part and God only knows, I might have sheared off over the years. I don't know, you know, that that street's been blacktopped over so many times, there's only about that much curb showing up in most locations anyway, so. So, yeah, I guess all I do is encourage you to vote in affirmative, to keep things moving forward for these people, and everybody will be happy when it's done, but you're gonna have to pay pay the price of inconvenience while it's under construction. It's never easy. And there's always gonna be complaints here to City Hall. And Megan, you know which which department you're gonna have to funnel and do. Anything you want to add, Jason?
No, I guess I didn't catch the first part of that, answering some other questions here. But yeah, I think in general, yeah, I mean, the prices are what they are. And again, at least for the foreseeable future, we don't see any any reductions in those coming. Maybe if something, you know, something happens with the inventories and things like that build up again, we'll maybe see some prices come down, but at least as far as what it looks like right now, whatever, you know, things are up and they might continue to keep going up. So it's not to say that if we kick the can down the road, that things are gonna get better.
And like I said, from my sources or trade magazines that I follow, that it's never gonna go back to pre-COVID pricing. So that's what we were talking about prior to while you were talking. I said our other option is we finish Highland and leave Oak the way it is. We have electric utility, patch all the driveway crossings and what have you, take it from there. But I don't think that's a progressive option, especially with the lead water replacement that we're trying to promote, and we know we've got lead water services.
And the I and I issues and.
Yep. I've said enough. No other questions or comments? Everybody's good? Roll call vote, please.
Meros?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution thirty, twenty-two is passed.
Thirty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, resolution thirty-one, twenty-two, resolution awarding construction contract for twenty-twenty-two East Oak Street. Richard, you wanna read that one?
Sure. Resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-two. Resolution awarding the construction contract for twenty-twenty-two East Oak Street reconstruction project. Whereas the Public Works Committee of the County Council of the City of Juneau, Wisconsin, did advertise and receive sealed bids for the twenty-twenty-two East Oak Street reconstruction project. And whereas three bids were received and are on file with the city engineer. And whereas a public hearing was held on August ninth, twenty twenty-two. For the purposes of hearing all interested parties concerning matters related to the proposed assessments for this project, now therefore be it resolved that the construction contract for the twenty-twenty-two East Oak Street reconstruction project be and is hereby awarded to Soper Sewer and Water LLC of Oshkosh, Wisconsin, for amount not to exceed one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred dollars and fifty cents. I would move to pass resolution thirty-one dash twenty-two.
Motion by Evans is your second.
Second.
Second by Grattan. Any further discussion? Jason, once again, this number of the low bidder was below your estimated cost.
Correct, yep.
MSA had estimated for cost construction, so.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Meros?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution thirty-one, twenty-two is passed. Moving on, Clark Treger, you have anything to report today?
Nothing, just hopefully everything's going well with the elections and I'll be heading over there shortly. Please, Lord, be home before ten.
Okay. Take Kay along with you. She can count fast. Written reports. Any questions on the billing permit report, the public? The police department, Juneau Fire and EMS? No questions on them. Moving on, reports of committees, commissions and boards, library report. Okay, are you responding for?
No, I was supposed to be working the election, so.
Janette said that she will update you all next month.
Okay.
Red dog, okay. Plan Commission.
Plan Commission, we met. We discussed implementing a pilot program for keeping of chickens within the city limits. Ashley Seidman was here, and she said that according to Facebook, there's ten to fifteen families interested in having chickens in the community. Other communities have chickens, so we looked at what other communities are doing and made a list, a proposed list for the pilot program. And we are meeting this Friday at six fifteen here to put that into onto paper for a pilot program. Such ideas where the annual license fee would be fifty dollars. We're looking at a limit of families of ten. A limit of chickens of six per family. The breeds allowed would be brown or black chickens. They're heavier and don't fly like white chicken can fly. Psych plan was required with the coop, a run of, with a run with a ten-foot setback. Ovariances would be considered. Coops are required to be anchored down. Families requesting to have chicks, chickens would need the approval of a budding neighbors. More roosters. Keep chicken feed in airtight containers. Abandoned coops will have a time limit to be removed. No butchering in the city limits. Failure to receive a permit. Those are just some of the things that are on the list to be looked at. So we will meet and get that done. Public safety and Plan Commission.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is the pilot program all ten? Or do you have ten?
Are you going to give ten permits out for a pilot or?
That was what was discussed.
I mean, this is just off the top of my head. If you make the investment, I mean, if you had ten families come and say, I have now invested in this coop and I have invested in these containers to keep, to eat, and I've invested in these chickens that my kids have all named. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, it might sound like a good idea, but after people maybe have invested this much money and the children are attached to their chicken, can you or would we then turn down the chickens? So I just throw that as, it's a good idea, but when you're faced with these families that say, well, I just invested all this money, could we then say, well, we don't really like it?
This is kind of, we didn't want to go through the cost of making ordinance and this is what we want. If it doesn't fit the community, maybe we want to do this. We can tweak it now or now, much like the pilot program for downtown to have a, have a eatery out front of your establishment. But we could, we could tweak it a little bit as to what we found if it doesn't work or does work.
So does your committee believe that if you have this pilot program, then you will probably then adopt the chicken ordinance? Because I guess I, as a person, would like to have a vote because I would vote in the negative. And it would seem that if you go this way, do I get, will there be a vote? For the first question, which is, do we want to allow chickens in the city of Juneau?
Will you six people get your act together? Because I don't want to have to break the tie on this one. Because I got, I got, I got two neighbors that showed up to that meeting that want to have chickens.
And, you know, I, I.
So this pilot program has to be agreed on by the committee. And then the committee represents it to the board as to what their feelings are.
And our circus is going to do a weekly inspection, too.
Ducks, yes.
Yeah.
I guess for the pilot program, we want to see how many people are interested in doing it. We don't want to change ordinance if only, or if we have an ordinance, only two people want to do it.
In that same note, Kay, we're hoping it'll fizzle out.
See, I'm a neighbor, I just got to do it.
See, I don't think it will fizzle out. See, that, I, I, my concern is it won't fizzle out. And I just want to clarify that I think there are people that don't want chickens in the city limits. And I would be one. And I would represent that, and I maybe I would be seen as a bias as somebody that was raised with chickens. I believe chickens are dirty. And they take a lot of work. And just like we have problems with people and their pets, right? Somebody that owns dogs, sometimes they, they're, they're great. They always take care of, of herding their dogs. And then you have people that don't take care of the dogs. We would have the same things with chickens. Some people will do exactly as they are expected to. And what are we going to do with people that do not? And then do we employ our police power? Are you going to have police check this and find them? And so those are, you know, those are just some of my concerns. And I just want to represent a section of the city that maybe is not interested in having any chickens in the city.
We, we originally talked that maybe we have four families, you know, for the city. But then when there's fifteen families that are looking for it. So I believe that the families of ten would be the full-fledged different one. Went full-fledged, but they're limited to ten. I would suggest that we put a pilot program, like we want to start with class. We don't want to start with class. If the pilot program is a test program. Correct, correct.
I mean, yeah, that's a sense. A pilot program is a test program. You let ten people invest what's going to have to be invested in six chickens and to keep them. You know, if they're going to come and, and we're going to say, okay, you now have spent thousands of dollars and you've named every chicken. It, it, it becomes a much harder thing to say, well, no, this really isn't going to fit for the city of Juneau. Then what? Yeah, then what? And so I'm, I'm, I guess I'm really on the fence about the pilot thing and I think that those are those considerations.
Good point.
Yeah.
Thoughts? It will have enough, and you know that, that's in an expressive.
And there is a workshop on Friday.
Friday.
That they are going to finalize their decision.
Friday, six fifteen, we'll be here to finalize the proposal that comes to, to the board to even allow them.
Yeah, and, and I have to say, it is difficult to have a relationship, a good relationship with your neighbor and they really want chickens and their children really want chickens. And you really do not want chickens.
But you would decide not to.
Yeah, and, and so then you create this uncomfortable situation. I, um, so those are my feelings on the anti-treatment. And I was raised with chickens.
Dave and John are sitting on that committee to narrow down the requirements and what have you, and they'll take your comments under advisement, I'm sure. Appreciate your input. Anything else, Dave, from planning commission?
Nope, it's all feathers in the future.
Finance committee, Cheryl's not here, we did not have a meeting.
No.
Personnel committee, Kay.
We didn't have a meeting, I didn't bother anybody.
John, public safety.
Public safety, we did have a meeting. Um, Steve handed out his monthly report. There was a, dealing with that three-twenty South Fairfield, the house that was under fire, heard up, attorney got a letter together and it was served. We gave her them.
And I've had conversations with her now.
Okay, did she bring them back or?
Yeah, I've talked to her a few times. She's agreeable to doing something, but she seems to have some challenges as far as moving from saying she's doing something to actually doing something. So she indicated most recently a couple of proposals that I'm going to talk to the neighbor about. Perhaps selling her property to them.
I think he was in favor of that, yeah.
To do that or otherwise contributing money toward the cleanup. So.
Okay, you said moving forward, then?
Moving forward, I think the better option for the city is, it's going to be more expensive if you have to do an enforcement action. You can, we have that power to do it.
Yeah.
But I think it's going to be less expensive if we can work it out for the neighbors.
Sure.
And I think this, Devin Chaddos, she's going to be cooperative. She just has some challenges, but she can't figure it out, so.
And we said, of course, she wouldn't even answer.
Yeah, no, now she's responsive.
That's good.
And now we're going to present some proposals to the neighbor.
Our only day is away from being a year and all.
Yeah.
Since the fire, so.
This month would be a year.
Right, well, if you didn't do anything, I'm convinced she would never do anything. It's just overwhelming to her.
All right, thanks. Yeah, their thing, Dave, before we had national bite out last Tuesday, I think it was well, well, well attended. A lot of city departments were in there. And we also lost a police officer, Dylan Townen, sent his writ by the way of the nation. So we had Dale, or Dave authorization, gave the application out for another police officer. So we lost that one. Dan Zake had, he had forty calls for the EMS. The fire department had five calls. And Auto Eight is now in effect with Border Con Fire Department with Juneau. We helped them out and they helped us out because we're both kind of short on personnel. We've had a couple of calls together, we're, we're from Los Feliz. And we just talked about the meeting with, Dave said about the chicken pilot program. And we also mentioned Bob Sweeney, the cable director, as retired. And we got a new person on board for that position.
Any questions for John? Seeing none, moving on to public works, David.
Public works, we did not meet.
Cable TV, Jane's not here, we did have a meeting, basically, oh, Kay.
Our, our new cable TV coordinator, David Bennett, and he was actually here tonight. I saw him in the background, but, so he was at the meeting. Talked about his transition into Bob's job. Talked about ideas for recording. And there was a motion, now, well, there was a little bit of a reorganization of that committee just because Bob always served as the chairman and the department head. So now Jane has been the representative from the council to be the chairman. And then Dave Bennett, the new person, the new hire. So that clarification was made. And that's about it.
Kay actually serves as a private citizen on the, on the cable committee. She's taken frequent hiatuses, so, you know, I put her back on committees and then she comes back and it's all diverse. Takes a little while to get that all straightened out again.
I'm about to take it out.
New chair.
So move.
Motion by Grant.
Second.
Second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Oh, Carrie, thank you, this meeting is closed.